Good evening. Welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's Mayor and Common Council. I'm pleased to note that the Mayor and Council are once again able to be publicly here in our Chamber in City Hall and invite the public to join us, even as our meetings become open to the public again. They will continue to be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we begin, as we do every meeting, with the Pledge of the Flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Obviously, tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the Council will be using are available online on the city's website for anybody who's interested. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to note that Mayor Becker is traveling this evening and is joining us virtually for this meeting, and she is, we can see her on screen there. I'd also like to note that we are pleased to have two of our former colleagues here with us tonight. Former Mayor Joe Dominic is with us, great to see him, as well as former Council President Robert Wack. Gentlemen, great to have you both with us tonight.
Maybe. We don't know what to hear it for.
It's still good to see them. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the Mayor and Council on June 14th, and the closed session of the same date, and the special meeting on July 2nd. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Gilbert and a second by Mr. Cavaci to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying nay, the ayes seem to have and the nays have it, and the minutes are approved. Tonight, we have two presentations, and for the first, we will go to Mayor Becker virtually. Dr. Becker?
I'm here. Thank you, Council President Pecorero. Good evening, everybody. Hello from North Carolina, where I do not have the beach behind me, although it is right outside the house here. So I have a proclamation to start the meeting with, and so this is a proclamation to end the public health emergency resulting from the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas on March 14th, 2020, Mayor Joe Dominic issued a proclamation declaring a public health emergency in the city prompted by the ongoing threat of widespread infection by the virus known as COVID-19, and whereas certain services and functions of city government were closed or changed to prevent widespread infection by the virus known as COVID-19, and whereas the Mayor and Common Council continued to abide by the recommendations of the Centers for the Disease and Control and Prevention throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the Mayor and Common Council continued to abide by state mandated measures throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas Governor Hogan of the state of Maryland has ended the state of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the CDC has issued guidance for return to work, travel, and many other operations. Now therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the city of Westminster, in conjunction with the Common Council, do hereby end the public health emergency known as the COVID-19 pandemic and return all government services and functions back to normal operating procedures unless CDC guidelines advise otherwise, adopted this 12th day of July 2021.
Alright. Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the list for presentations is a presentation, long awaited presentation, I think, on the Wakefield Valley Park Master Plan. I think Ms. Gruber will turn to you to introduce the subject.
Yes, thank you. On September 14th, as you may remember, the Mayor and Council awarded a contract to Penney Associates Incorporated to assist with the development of a master plan for Wakefield Valley Park. The master plan will provide a foundation for the future phase development of the property so that it can serve as a cornerstone of the city's park system. It is also intended to lay the groundwork for city grant applications and capital funding requests to finance future park development and improvements. On June 18th, a draft of the final report was provided by email for review. To conclude the master planning process, Penney Associates Incorporated will conduct their final presentation at this evening's meeting. The scope of work performed by Penney Associates included gathering input from a variety of sources. Considerable emphasis was placed on obtaining widespread community feedback. The initial step in the information gathering process was a kickoff meeting with city staff held on October 22nd, 2020. The city administrator and representatives from the Recreation and Parks Department and Public Works Department participated in this meeting. During the meeting, relevant site information was exchanged, a project timeline schedule was developed. Following that, as you may remember, we held a special meeting with the Mayor and Council on November 10th, 2020. This provided the elected body with the opportunity to share its thoughts about the future of Wakefield Valley Park prior to Penney Associates undertaking the community outreach portion of its work. To follow, a series of public meetings were held with virtually and in person to engage the community in the planning process. The first meeting held on December 16th was intended to offer both a virtual and in-person experience. However, the in-person component was canceled due to winter weather. The remaining two meetings were held virtually and in person at the Carroll Arts Center on January 27th and March 2nd, 2021. Staff recommends that the Mayor and Common Council accept the recommendations outlined in Penney Associates' final report as a guide for future initiatives at Wakefield Valley Park. And with that, I would like to introduce you to Peter Stone, the lead consultant for Penney Associates that has worked tirelessly alongside the city on this journey.
Exactly. I don't know about tirelessly, but this has been a really, really fun project for us. It's not something we get to do often, starting from not quite a blank slate, but starting from kind of a very just open framework and developing something that can, like Abby said, can lay the groundwork, lay a framework for a future plan. I wanted to thank Abby and her staff, and then also the Mayor and Council, just for the opportunity. We've had a lot of fun doing the projects and are really excited about what could happen out here. It's a really unique site. It's not something you see very often in cities of this size especially. Just a big, open parcel of land that actually isn't just kind of an open undeveloped parcel. It's got a lot of kind of opportunity already built in. So there is a lot of opportunity with this particular site. So tonight, I wanted to just kind of review the master plan development, review in a little more detail the community input process that Abby had mentioned, kind of what we were able to, what information we're able to glean, what we presented and the feedback we got, and then take a brief look at the master plan itself that y'all have had a chance to look at. So what's a master plan? Abby kind of touched on that, but it's not a final construction plan. It's not something that can go out and get built tomorrow. It may not include every possibility that could happen at the site. There's flexibility built into them a lot of times, but it is a framework for future funding, future planning, future development. It's going to provide guidance for future plans. We look at a lot of master plans with other projects that we do, and we, a lot of times, somebody starts or does a master plan, and then that's passed on to the next consultant that starts a project or that looks at a project, and is a constant reference back to the master plan itself to find out, well, what is the intent, and what was the overall guidance and framework that's provided? Next slide. Actually, two slides. So with the, yeah, with the plan, we looked at some overall goals, just to kind of organize a plan. And I wanted to review these. They came out of kind of the initial meetings we had with staff, the community input, the input we received from the Mayor and Council upfront, and the scope that was provided. So these kind of structured the overall goal of the plan. One of the things we wanted to look at was passive park development. So what's passive, what's a passive park? So passive and active are kind of two ways to categorize parks. Active tends to be a lot more activities, ball fields, a lot of activities that tend to draw a lot of people. With this park, we wanted to focus more on passive activities. That was pretty clear upfront as we talked to people. So what are passive activities as well? Walking trails. Things that you can do out in nature that don't involve necessarily a large gathering of people. There is some of that in this park, but it's weighted more towards that kind of passive nature of a park. We wanted to look at access. That was one of the items that was identified in the scope and then early on. Can we improve access to the site? It's, it does have access on the public road, but it's not great. What can we do to improve that? That was something we looked at. How do we connect this piece of ground to other surrounding city trails, to other areas around it? How do you make those connections so that more people can utilize the space? We restore the site. That was something that we heard a lot through the community input process. Is there a way to restore the site to kind of enhance the nature that's already there? How do we do that? And then how do we tell the history of the site, maybe the history of the city, through kind of this particular site? It does have some historical, or a historical structure on it. So how do you tell the story of this site? And then as a larger whole, how do you maybe tell the story of Westminster? So those are kind of five things that we use to organize the plan. Next slide. So what we started with was gathering information, visiting the site. Our team spent, I think we did at least two site visits. We spent time out on the site, got to know it to some degree. I mean, we didn't spend days and days out there, but we got a feel for the site. We gathered information from the city, from the county, from state resources, just to understand kind of what's going on on the site itself. And then we started to do some analysis. So we looked at some of the things that are up here on the screen, environmental features, floodplains, steep slopes, where streams are, potentially where wetlands are. What's the elevation of the site, the different parts of the site relative to each other? Where is the existing development on the site? How's it been developed over the years? And then things like where are utilities on the site? What's the ownership of land around the site? Where it's privately owned versus county-owned versus city-owned or it's a modern entity? Those kinds of things, we kind of gathered together, tried to aggregate them. And then, next slide, we start, actually, the next slide, it will show a, just an example of some of the site analysis. So on the screen, you see the, an aerial photograph of the site. The red boundary there is the site boundary, and it's a little hard to see. That blue area running through, there's the 100-year floodplain. So that was something we wanted to identify right off the bat. Is that stream corridor running through there is very important to the site. So we needed to know where the floodplain are, is, and what other resources are associated with that. And then also, that also kind of drove opportunities for restoration. Next slide. Taking all that information, we were able to put together our first, not master plan, but what I call kind of an opportunities constraints map. So that allowed us to identify particular areas that, A, either needed to be preserved, or B, could serve as future development opportunities. So what you see on the screen there, that green, light green shade, or areas that had some sort of reason to be preserved, whether it was an 100-year floodplain, whether there was a stream bunker, whether there was wooded areas there, or steeper slopes, those areas we felt needed to be set aside generally off the bat. And then we looked at the yellow shapes on the plan where areas potentially where development could occur, where more maybe typical park-like activities could occur. The, as well on the plan, we also looked at trails, starting to take a first look at trails. Because that, early on, that was something that was very important, kind of in the minds of staff, the Mayor and Council, and then the early input we received from the community. So we looked at where the existing carp paths are, because there is an existing trail system on the site that's used widely by city residents. So where are those carp paths? Where are opportunities to maybe consolidate? For instance, the stream crossings, can we consolidate those? Do we don't have so many? Where does it make sense to consolidate those? Where can we, where should we follow the carp paths? Where should we maybe go off the existing carp paths and develop a new trail? Where do we need to make connections when there currently aren't connections? So we kind of worked through all that and put this plan together. And then this was presented at the first public input meeting that we had back in December to try to start obtaining input from, from the city residents. So, next slide. So we went through a whole series of community input meetings, like Abby said, and used various tools to gather input. The first meeting, we developed a series of photo boards to just start to trigger input from people as far as different preferences for park activities or important areas of the Wakefield Valley site. Things that people felt were important about that particular site that we, as a design team and with Wreckin' Park staff, could start to put together and start to kind of direct the master plan in one way or another. We reviewed those opportunities and constraints kind of upfront. And just, just to let folks know that here's an opportunity, here's why we're looking at this particular area, or why we may look at this particular area as we develop the plan further. One of the things we looked at during this meeting, or that we talked about, was the difference between linear and destination activities. So a linear activity is more oriented towards a trail, like riding a bike, running, walking, hiking, cross-country skiing, whatever, those types of things. Or they tend to maybe be more solitary or more small groups. And a destination activity would maybe be more like a ball field or playground where you draw a lot of people into it. And we used that to start to organize the plan as we went through. Then we went on to our second meeting, which was in, go to the next slide, in January. And at that time, presented kind of our first pass at a master plan. So we'd organized, we developed an opportunities constraints map. We'd gotten input from staff, or from the public, and then started to put together that first pass at a master plan. We talked about a couple of things at that meeting. One was, and this, some of this was based on input that we received in the first meeting. One thing that we tried to do is help people understand what the scale of the park is. It's not a small little park. It's a big piece of property. It's 187 acres. And we presented this exhibit, which just tries to give people an idea of kind of how long the property is. So circles on the plan represent different distances. I think from 750 feet on the innermost circle, and then the 1,500 feet, 3,000 feet, and 4,000 feet. So from one end to the other, the park is over 6,000 feet. It's over a mile long from one end to the other. I mean, it's not a regular, safe piece of property, but it's big. So when people are worried about kind of the mix of activities, we're trying to help people understand it's a big piece of property. There's a lot of space to accommodate kind of a lot of trails, but also some ball fields and some more intense, typical park-like activities. We also wanted folks to start to understand, or we presented kind of the need to to look at proximity and adjacency of different activities. So certain activities have to go with other types of activities. Generally, you've got the center of the park centered around the two existing buildings in the parking lot. And most people, you're not going to put a ball field all the way to the other end of the park and have people park in a parking lot. You're going to locate ball fields and playgrounds and things like that near that parking area. So there's certain things that have to be next to others, just trying to help folks understand that. And then we also looked at park areas, tried to kind of break the park up into what we called neighborhoods. So different areas where you've got the eastern side of a park on the other side of the Homer Farm Road. You've got the park core, you've got the string valley, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, it is a, it's a big site. And then we started to get some additional input. So different from the first meeting, but we presented that initial master plan and then asked folks, well, when you're looking at this first plan, what's a change that you would make? Just one change you can make, and then why would you make the change? Does the plan, does this iteration achieve the highest priorities that were presented in meeting one? And then just asking people to kind of think outside of the box. What's something that the community would benefit for 25 years down the road that could be done here at Wakefield Valley Park? So just trying to get input on different topics. And we got a lot of input, a lot of helpful input, because we wanted to do this. But also helped to kind of solidify the direction that we were going with the plan. Our next slide. The last meeting in March, we had revised the plan based on the input that we got. And the main goal of this meeting was to go through the phasing, to start to gather input about the phasing of the park so that we could prioritize kind of which phases should be done before other phases. Obviously, it's a big park. It's not all over at once. So how do we organize a phasing plan? What were the priorities that folks had? We also tried to address some specific concerns that came up during the initial meeting, or the, I guess, the second meeting, when we presented the initial master plan. There were some specific current concerns raised. One of them was some ball fields, baseball fields that have been located near Louisville Court. So we looked at that, and in talking with Wreckin' Park staff, we were able to come up with a solution and address that. There was some concern about the scope and size of the proposed event venue. So we tried to address kind of what was really, what the plan was for that. It's not, we weren't looking at a Merryweather Post Pavilion or Wolf Trap. It was a small, community-based type facility. Site access was brought up. There was a lot of discussion about site access, how you access the site, how do you improve that? So we worked through some of that in that meeting. And then got into the input that folks had on phasing and priorities. Next slide. So based on all that input and the feedback that we got, we put together a final master plan. It has a lot of different components, but mainly is organized around a trail system kind of throughout the whole park, restoration of the stream corridor and some reforestation throughout the site. And then a park core kind of centered around the existing parking lot, these existing buildings. And the park core contains a lot of different things, but three or four ball fields were envisioned there. Just multi-purpose fields that could be used for football field, hockey, whatever, not lighted fields, but just ball fields that could be used for organized or unorganized play. Some playgrounds in that area, a number of pavilions, including some larger pavilions that could be rented out. And then an event venue kind of centered or behind the existing clubhouse, kind of on that, the existing fairway that runs out to the south from that clubhouse. And then overall, some, just some transportation-type improvements with some smaller satellite parking lots, and then ultimately a new access off of the Homer Farm Road. And there's a lot of other smaller details there, but that's generally kind of how the plan developed, with that core and then the trail system that runs throughout. Let's see, next slide. And I've gotten listed here, some of the stuff that I just talked about, like some of the other things, fishing pier, disc golf course, throughout the, that would kind of follow the trail system, dog park. There's some, there's some areas of the site that have a lot of topography. So a sledding hill is not something that you really designed, but there's an area that could be set aside for sledding or whatever. I mean, you wouldn't, maybe wouldn't do something else on that hill, but it, it's an area that kids are going to use if it's there. And then looking at a potential future building site, that was something that was mentioned kind of on the master plan, just in that park core area near the two existing buildings, a future building. Just ident, more, not really programming a building, but identifying, here's, if you were going to do another building on the site, here's an area where we make sense to do it. Next slide. We put this exhibit together to just highlight the trails. So we took everything else off, and it just highlights the trails that are proposed on the site. So there's approximately seven miles of trails proposed with this plan. A lot of them do follow the existing carp paths. They're already there. It makes sense. There's some areas where you could maybe use the carp paths with minimal, minimal change to them. And that's something that as the plan goes forward, that should be looked at. Like, where can we, as the plans progressed and as construction documents prepared, prepared, things like that, could you reuse some of the carp paths with minimal kind of repair or things like that? Not necessarily tear it up and replace it, but are some of them in suitable condition where they could just be reused as? Some of them do need to be replaced. There's some areas that are not in good condition. But we looked at with the trails, a generally a 10-foot hard surface path, and that's the lighter beige color going through there. But we also looked at a 12-foot hard surface path that would be a thicker section that would provide access to the city to, like, for vehicles to get to, for instance, there's a water building kind of towards the south end of the site. And there's some other infrastructure that having a, almost a one-lane road going through there that could double as a path, makes a lot of sense and provides that access and kind of long-term thinking that will benefit everybody down the road. We also looked at the stream crossings. There's a number of kind of small bridges that are in place from the existing golf course that aren't in really good shape, and kind of improving those with a nice pedestrian bridge would really do a lot for the site itself. And there's a number of those. I think I've got seven or eight of those scattered throughout the entire, along the string valley, basically, to allow folks to cross at various locations. Next slide. I referenced the park core. I know this is kind of hard to see, but this exhibit just kind of highlights some of the things in the park core that we've kind of already talked about. Existing buildings, the maintenance building was, we didn't mention before, on the bottom of the screen there. And then the fields, the event area, the band cell is the end of the event area. Sport courts, something else that was looked at, whether those are pickleball or tennis. Some type of hard surface sport court is another opportunity here for this particular site. Alright, next slide. Taking all that input, taking a master plan, we developed a phasing plan, which you see here. And I'll just run through this real quick. The phasing is something that we see as flexible. Obviously, certain things have to happen before certain other things, but I think there's a lot of flexibility built into this plan. We tried to organize it based on the priorities that folks mentioned at our third meeting. And the priorities were generally trails, kind of restoration of the site, and then looking at some fields. So phase one is the yellow color there, and that's primarily just trail work. So upgrading the existing trail system, making some needed repairs to kind of connect things through upgrading a couple of stream crossings. Phase two would generally be focused on restoration. And the restoration is something we call it phase two, but that could happen kind of almost attached to every single phase. It's not something that has to happen, just as phase two, is a strictly linear process. Phase three is satellite parking lots, so off of Old New Windsor Road on the left side of the exhibit, and then off of the Homer Farm Road, just some smaller parking lots to allow folks to access the site. And not necessarily have to come through the front door, park in a big parking lot, but kind of get in a little, small parking lot there and then be able to access the trail network from there. And also to access the site off of the Homer Farm Road for pedestrians, for instance, that could enter that location. Phase four is focused on some of the ball fields there in the middle of it, the large ball fields in the middle of the site. So getting some large ball fields built, graded, and open for use. Phase five is the Phase five is the what we're calling the east, east meadow, I think is what I ended up calling it in the park area plan, so that forcing east of Tahoma Farm Road, where you've got kind of a parcel cart path running around that site, but not a, not a full connected trail loop. So providing that over there, just a trail, no vehicle, no vehicle access or anything on that side of the road. But also there would be an upgraded, the crossing area to make sure you had a safe street crossing at Tahoma Farm Road. Phase six is the park or itself, so more fields, some the sport courts, I think were in that phase. And just, and more focused on a park core. Phase seven, the event area, it's really focused on the event area behind the clubhouse. Providing a pavilion, a band show, amphitheaters of sort, and then probably some trails through that. There's trails in almost all these phases as well. It's not one phase, it's focused on on trails. And then phase eight would be the initial kind of access off of Tahoma Farm Road where the new, the ultimate new access should be. So for now, just creating with this phase, just creating a small parking area off of Tahoma Farm Road. A fishing pier would be part of that for the, the upper lake. And then in a later phase, I think down in in phase 10, actually build that access through there. And then we did have some more trails and I guess phase nine at the kind of the back end of the site. Looking at the plan towards the left hand, we've got also of the dog park could be in that phase. Towards the end of the project, potentially. But like I said, those things to be, those pieces can kind of be shifted around. And the next slide, this is actually the last one. So what, one of the items that we had in the scope was doing a cost estimate. So we, on our master plan, we had a sub consultant go through, does cost estimating all the time and put together a cost estimate and then took that cost estimate and tried to break that down to match the phasing. So that the, just to, I guess, give staff an idea of cash flow or kind of what each particular phase may cost. And then also what is potential design costs associated with that, just take that percentage of those. And this sort of matrix that you see on the screen just kind of walks through the phases that I just mentioned. And some of the key points and then takes that cost based on the items that are in that phase. So that's really, I mean, that was the, the plan that's been put together, it's all I've seen. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. If there's anything that wasn't clear or question about the plan itself. But again, thank you for the opportunity. It's been a fun project and looking forward to seeing what happens with things go, things play out.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. President?
Hey, Mr. President, I got just a couple. What currently in the early phases, you, you've got it in here. You're talking about the trail network and, and I know that there's, there's some, some cost in here that it also talks about some pavilions and, and things like that. But it looks like that just the initial phases of the trail portion of it is a, a little over a million dollars is what you have estimated there, million two with the design and everything like that. And that's to go through the existing trails that already exist there and improving them and fixing the bridges and, and things like that, right?
Correct.
Yes. It does it also, but it does not include the trails in that part that's on the other side of Tahoma Farm?
Yeah.
In that?
Future phase.
What, what are the, what's the, what are the trails like over there? I haven't been in there in years.
So I know it's not a complete loop. There's areas where there's no trail at all.
No, because it's eroded away or there just never was?
I don't think there ever was.
Ever was. I'm trying to remember, I played that course a million times, but not million, but a bunch of times. And I don't really remember how you drove around in there.
Yeah, I know it kind of runs around, so as you enter that area, you kind of bend to the right. And it does cross the stream there.
And then there's just a turnaround, I guess, right?
Maybe at the very end, but then I think there's some other just kind of pieces.
So, but the, the million two, million three number that you have in there for that phase one of the project is predominantly fixing, improving, making the, the trail network more
A portion of the trail network.
Certainly a portion.
Could you bring up the slideshows again? Because it shows, that's maybe the best way to, uh.
Mr. President, I don't mean to interrupt this.
Yes.
I was just trying to figure out where you guys are seeing the cost matrix, because
That right there.
Yeah, but I can't see that on my computer.
It's actually in the plan as well, in the master plan.
I have that plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. The draft master plan document.
There was a draft master plan with search available first back in February.
That's right.
Oh, okay, okay. I apologize, I apologize for interrupting, but I thought I was missing something.
Okay. And so I was just, I was digging around finding it. Okay. Everybody, everybody has fresh access to it because one of the questions I had was, were there any changes in the text in the draft plan? To the final recommendation.
So can I answer Mr. Kavachi's question?
Sure.
So phase one is what's in the yellow.
Okay, got it.
So mainly from the maintenance building all the way to Old New Windsor Road, kind of getting that particular run of the trail up to snuff, because it's not, and that's probably in the worst condition.
And it's also probably the part that people use pretty
Exactly, right.
I know that's what I use when I'm out there.
Right. So that was kind of the initial phase and then I think
And that includes bridge repairs and things like that as well?
That included, I think, two bridges.
Okay.
So there were two bridges as part of that. And there's bridges kind of in a number of the phases.
Okay.
But we're spending a lot more than a million dollar on trails because the trails are broken down throughout the different phases.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, and I'm sure that's in here somewhere if I dug through it to find how much we're spending.
Well, we're not spending anything.
Well, no.
Yeah, let's be, let's be clear.
Okay, true, yes.
We're not spending a dime at this point.
What's budgeted, or not budgeted?
Not budgeted, the plan.
Okay, thank you.
So the draft master plan you have in front of you, the text in there, none of that's changed at this point. That's the draft. And when I say the master plan, it's just, it's not, so yeah. They haven't updated anything yet, hasn't been finalized. Or hopefully they're going to be finalized in adversity.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, what, what point are we going to come back and maybe talk about this a little bit?
That's a great question, and I think Mr. Stone just gave us the answer to that. So once we receive the final draft,
Okay.
I think we will make sure that that is distributed to the mayor and council and probably to some other important stakeholders. And we will have the chance to schedule a, a discussion at that time, you know, where, you know, we will be able to have in front of us, maybe have an informed conversation about it with the document in front of us.
Yeah, I think it's important, you know, with a lot of citizens put a lot of time and effort into giving feedback and attending meetings. And I, I think we need to, as the ultimate deciding body, at some point, we all need to weigh in, kind of where we're at with it and all.
So I agree.
Yeah, Mr. President, I tend to agree. And we, we did spend government, granted, it was not our personal city money, but somewhere along the line, it was government money that we were able to obtain as a grant to do the study. And I hate to see that to go to waste if we don't do a follow-up from that. So at least have a plan, you know, maybe a committee, whatever it is that we, we decide to do it as your, as you have suggested.
Right.
So that we kind of move forward instead of just letting the study sit here.
Absolutely, that, that will be how we, you know, as we've done throughout this entire process, we have been open and transparent. We've tried to make the entire process accessible and, you know, we'll certainly make, you know, we've had, we've gathered a lot of community input. You know, from a variety of sources, I think that, you know, people have had a chance to do that. And, you know, I think that we're, we're reaching a stage where we'll want to have, you know, all this information in front of us and for the mayor and council to be able to have our turn, best in conversation about this, which was, I think, will be the next step after we receive the final documents. And we will, again, make sure that we do that and make sure that everybody's aware of where, when, when we're going to do that and where we're going to do that. You know, so we'll have a chance for people who'd like to watch us virtually or in person to be able to join us.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dehaas.
So to be clear, we'll schedule a work session?
Well, work session or account, you know, or maybe it'll just be the, the major item on the agenda one day.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide ample time.
Okay.
And it may be over the course of more than one meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
The mayor's gone off the screen because we've been watching the presentation, but Mayor Becker, would you like to?
Yeah, I just, yeah, just, just real quick, thank you. So, you know, I'm, I like this plan. I, I think that this, this plan has a lot of potential moving forward and is something that I've been interested in. And I do have a question with the trail. It sort of follows up on what Councilmember Kavachi was asking with the, with the trail. You know, sort of the, the repairs. We had had some discussions, I know, in, in the past, and this would have been prior to, to 2019 with the upkeep, with the upkeep of the trails and, you know, sort of some of the repairs of the trails. Are, are the trails going to be ADA compliant throughout the park or are we going to look at? And is that included in that cost estimate on that, in that for phase one, for those linear trails?
So the intent was to make the trails ADA compliant to the extent possible generally. And we looked at kind of the actual topography and the trail alignment to see if that would be a problem. And we don't think that's going to be a problem. It's, this isn't a final engineering document that the contractor can go out and use to construct something. But based on our first glance, I don't think that that's going to be a problem to make a large majority of the trails at a minimum ADA compliant. There may be some areas where maybe you decide not to do a hard surface trail because you can't meet the 5% maximum slope. And maybe that's just more of a, a hiking type trail that is a little steeper than like a wheelchair accessible trail. So, but yes, the intent was to make as much as possible, make it as ADA compliant.
Okay, great. Yeah, I appreciate that because I've gotten a couple of questions about that from residents. And, and I will say that I, I do appreciate the, the phase one with the trails. And I think that might be what we would, would think about focusing on first as well. I can tell you within just even the last couple of weeks, there's been a couple of permits that have come to me for signatures for events at Wakefield Valley utilizing that linear trail system for races. So I do think that that would be one of the first things we'd like to focus on. But no, thank you very much for, for your report. And for the prior council for contracting with you to do that. I, I really appreciated the work that you've, that you put into that.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Stone?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
Just to say thank you, I know you put a lot into this, I mean, obviously you're getting paid to do it, but still, you know, you, you obviously cared a lot about it. And I, I think it's a good working template for us to have lots of discussions and we have a lot of decisions. And it gives us a, a pathway forward to continue to improve that wonderful piece of property that we have.
Do you have any additional comment I will make is I, I very much appreciate the concept of, you know, of phasing it over time because realistically, you know, and this is a discussion for another day, there's no realistic way we can digest something like this all at once from a financial standpoint as well. So I appreciate really the fact that it was broken down in multiple phases because, you know, depending on funding, availability and other things, you know, we could do more than one phase at one time, depending on what resources we have, be it grant-wise or otherwise. So I appreciate looking at that. And the other thing I just would like to remind everybody and everybody on council certainly understands this, this is just a master plan. When we actually start doing the particular phases, there'll be a site plan, which will be much more detailed. And there will be changes, having dealt with this in this world for a long time. There will be changes from this master plan to the site plan phase. But this gives us a very good guide of here we're trying to head. And hopefully, as we head through the various phases and the site plans, you know, the master plan sets what the intent is. And that's important that we have that roadmap. So those are my own comments right now.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
One more, I'm sorry. I did also want to make sure we recognize Ms. Gruber's involvement in this. I know she's put a ton into it and I received a lot of positive feedback about the three events you guys held and, and in particular about you and the way you handled things and the interaction you had with the public. I, I had lots of people come up and comment about how positive it was. And, you know, I mean, look, we're not going to make everybody happy. We know that. And there's going to be people who are going to hate whatever we do. That's just, that's the nature of what we do. But it was a lot of positive feedback and I'm appreciative and I think I speak for everybody up here. We're, we're appreciative of, of everything we did, getting us to this point. That's it. So I'm not going to say any
That's right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else? Mr. Dehaas?
I'd like to remind everyone that we have a really good track record of doing this very successfully. We did it with the Wakefield Valley Trail. We phased it, we did it over quite a number of years. We went out and got grants and we've done a good job with that. So that's what we'll, this will be an ongoing project. And I'm looking forward to all the opportunities. And I also received a lot of really good feedback from, not about the, not only the consultants, but of Ms. Gruber and her staff and how well we did this master plan. So I'm, I'm really excited about it. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dehaas. Right, well, again, thank you, Mr. Stone, and thanks, Ms. Gruber. You know, as, as I've said many times ever since we started talking about this, this is a legacy project. This is a project that is going to be a big part of the legacy of this council and the previous council. There's no rush to get it done because the important thing is to get it done right. The city's not going anywhere and neither is the park. And so we've got plenty of time to look at the right approach and to look at the phases and figure out exactly what we want to do when and what the city can afford to do. And frankly, and what meets the needs of the city at a particular time. And I think that that's, you know, one of my goals is to make sure that over time, your future mayors and councils also have the ability to make decisions about what meets the needs of the city that they see, you know, at their time or yes, 10 years from now or 20 years or 50 years or, or 100 years. Because it's a large piece of property and, and, you know, it's going to, and again, it's going to be able to meet a lot of needs for a long time. So we've got that opportunity and we take it seriously as well. We'll take our time today. And so with that, again, thank you very much. We will, as, you know, we'll look forward to the final report and schedule the conversation and, or conversations. And we'll look forward to doing that. Thank you. Move on now to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar for approval. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Dehaas to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the consent calendar is approved. Now, a report from the mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Raysville Beach. Hey, so I will, I will keep it short. Just, although it seemed like it's, it's been a while since we've met. Just, we had a, I had a really great MML meeting in Ocean City, Maryland, with several other council members who were there. We got to attend some really great sessions and the networking was really fantastic. And so there, there'll be some more of that, I think, a little bit later. And then the, the two other pieces I just want to touch on real briefly. We had a special meeting on July 2nd. I know that this was missed by a couple of people in the community because we, we pulled together and, and had a virtual meeting where Ms. Sarah Emhols was appointed as our new city administrator who will start. And she will start and join us on September 7th. And I'd just like to again extend a thank you to the prior council for starting that search process and sending us some very qualified candidates. um, and sending us, um, some very qualified candidates to bring in an interview. And, um, I am very excited and happy that the council approved the nomination unanimously of Ms. Imhols to begin, uh, as our new city administrator. But I just wanted to mention that tonight, I think we're all really excited to have her join us, uh, in the fall since, um, some folks in the community missed that special meeting that we had on July 2nd. Um, the other thing I just want to bring up just real quickly, we, not, not for discussion, just put it on a radar, but I know we've talked about it a couple of times. Um, one of the sessions I did attend at MML was about strategic planning. Uh, and I do know that we will sit down, uh, with Ms. Imhols when she arrives, uh, in September, um, and probably think about starting some strategic planning as well. And, uh, one of the things that I'm going to talk to council members about, uh, coming up is making sure that we get some community involvement in the strategic planning. I went to a really great session, uh, where, um, I talked to the city administrator of Frederick. And, uh, he presented their strategic planning that they had done in Frederick over the last, uh, two years and their vision statement that they had made for Frederick. Uh, it was called Frederick 2030. Um, and they produced a vision statement of what they believed Frederick would look like in the year 2030. And I found their whole process to be really fascinating, especially the community involvement, uh, which is something that I'm, I'm really passionate about. So, um, just, just to sort of maul that over a little bit as we move forward. Um, and that is all I have. Keep it short and I'll go back and mute myself again.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Becker. Uh, move on now to reports from standing committees. Uh, begin as we always do with, uh, these are the arts council. Mr. DeHaas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Arts Council, um, continues to, um, increase its programming and, uh, it's bringing a lot of folks downtown and we're really excited about that. Uh, one of my favorite programs at, uh, the Carroll Arts Center is Flick. The Film Lovers in Carroll County features a lot of foreign films. And, uh, one of the, uh, foreign films that's coming up that I'm really excited about is the, the Peanut Butter Falcon. And that's going to be at the Carroll Arts, uh, Center on Friday, August the 13th at 1:00 and 7:30. We're also starting to bring back live performances, um, and it is quite a long list of live performances. Uh, the one that I'm particularly excited about is the next one, and that's on August the 27th. And that'll be the Eric Bird Trio. Um, we're also working at, um, looking forward to, um, uh, choosing a, um, uh, an executive director, Dr. Judy Morley, um, has, is going to retire, uh, later on in the year. And, and, uh, that search committee is going really well. A lot of really talented people in that search committee. And, uh, we're looking at a lot of, uh, really talented folks that, uh, hopefully will, um, dovetail in with, uh, the excitement that we have for our new city administrator, uh, Sarah Imhols. And she, she also, she came to the, um, well, I, I guess I could bring that up, uh, under the Wreckin' Parks Report, but she did come to the Pride Festival and it was exciting, uh, this, be able to spend some time with her. That'd be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaas. Um, move now to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Mr.?
I have exciting news that we are finally been able to coordinate schedules. And we have our first meeting scheduled for July the 27th at 3:00 PM. And we're going to be meeting live in the new, uh, city building. Um, and it's probably going to mainly revolve around a lot of brainstorming of different ideas that, uh, conversations I've been having in the community as well as with, uh, staff. Um, and trying to make a list of priorities. Uh, there are a lot of great ideas. Um, but of course, we can't do everything at once. So kind of a brainstorming session of some of these ideas and, um, the prior, priority in which ones we should tackle first, uh, is going to be the main focus of that initial meeting. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Tom. Uh, I have no report from the finance meeting this evening. Uh, Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
We had a personnel meeting on June 23rd. We discussed several items, um, at that meeting. General consensus was we will probably, um, readdress most of those issues, um, when our new city administrator starts in September. So our next personnel meeting will probably not occur until after, um, Ms. Imhols begins.
All right, thank you. Um, Public Safety Committee, Mr. Cavaci.
Crime continues to be low, um, really, uh, very, very, very limited in terms of the amount of serious issues we're dealing with. You know, the, the bulk of the crime in the community is either shoplifting from the big box stores. Walmart certainly keeps us extremely busy with calls. Um, and, uh, you know, petty thefts from vehicles that are usually unlocked. Um, but beyond those things, fortunately, we don't have a whole lot and that's a wonderful thing to report again. Also, I'm going to parlay, if I might, Mr. President, my public safety and my public works reports, um, for a moment.
Go ahead.
Um, Councilmember DeHaas mentioned we had the Pride Festival this past weekend. Both departments put a lot of effort into preparing for that. That is not a city event. Um, it's not a city sponsored event, so it doesn't, it, it doesn't operate the same way some of our other events do. However, it is still very resource, uh, needy when it comes to both our streets department and our police department, and in particular, our police department for this event. Because of course, there's always the concern that some nonsense could happen. So there's always a heavy presence. And I think they did a wonderful job being out there, um, representing the police department, both from the safety perspective, but they also were there as a public relations effort and were giving out, you know, stickers and badges and, and I, I just, again, just like I was saying about Ms. Gruber, lots of positive feedback, um, from the folks in the community that approached me, um, at the booth I was working at. Um, a lot of positive comments. And again, parlaying it in with Public Works, uh, they put a lot of effort in. They don't get quite the recognition because they're not there during the event being seen as much, but they put a lot into it as well to prepare the streets. So there are both of my reports, Mr. President.
All right, very good, very efficient, Mr. Cavaci. Uh, we'll move on to the Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. DeHaas.
Well, once again, I want to reiterate how much I like the, uh, the master plan for, uh, the Wakefield Valley Park. We're really excited about all the opportunities that, uh, that'll bring to the, the Wakefield Valley Park. And, um, I use, um, your words constantly, Mr. President. I don't often give you credit for it, but it is a legacy issue, uh, for the city of Westminster. I think 100 years from now, I think history will be very kind to us for what it is that we've developed as, as far as a, a large open space, um, in the, um, the city of Westminster. Um, I imagine Ms. Gruber will later elaborate upon, uh, that we're going to have a ribbon cutting tomorrow and we're really excited about the, the ribbon, um, cutting. And I know, um, Dr. Becker will be really excited to, uh, spend some time with the podium. The podium will be coming to the, the event. Um, and, uh, we'll have a ribbon cutting at the Dahoma Farm Park, uh, for the new playground equipment that, that has been installed, uh, down there. That'll be at 7:00 on Tuesday, July the 30th.
And I am out of town all week.
Oh, you can't be there?
I was, I was not, uh.
We're going to talk about you.
Well, I was not there. Nope. I will not be there.
I'll be darned.
I'll be there.
Oh, the president will be there. So he'll, so, so he'll, he'll be able to, uh, spend some time with the podium. The famed city podium. Okay. Okay. I believe that'll be, um, all of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaas. And, um, finally, the Technology Committee, um, I do not have a report, but, uh, yeah, we are going to be meeting sometime in the near future once the mayor returns. And I'm back from the following week. Looking forward to have a little conversation about, uh, what's been, particularly what's been happening with, uh, cyber attacks on other communities. Westminster has done a lot, you know, over the past, uh, couple of years. Um, back when Dr. Wack and then Mayor Dominic were here, there began, I think, some intensive efforts to try and, uh, protect the city. Mr. Davis and Doug and his folks have done a good job. And we'll talk about what else we can and should be doing, you know, to make sure that the city is, uh, as protected as we can. So we have some committee comments. We'll go into council comments and discussion, uh, just working with other table. Mr. Huff, any comments?
The only comment, uh, is that I also intended, uh, MML, Maryland Missile League, and, uh, that was a, a real learning process. And, uh, I really appreciated the opportunity to attend, uh, went to several different sessions, um, and considered it a real learning opportunity to, uh, kind of better understanding, uh, you know, the role as a councilperson. And, uh, it was a great event.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci.
Good, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci and Ms. Gilbert.
Um, yes, I have a couple of things for tonight. Um, first, it has been a, a little while since we met and I'll go back all the way to June 26th. Um, the mayor, um, Councilman Cavaci and Councilman Huff and I were, um, at the ribbon cutting of Together We Own It. Um, the tour of the facility was, um, wonderful. Um, I enjoyed, um, Katie Kirby's tour and, um, her explanation of the facility, which I was slightly familiar with, as I think most of us on council are. So I wanted to welcome them, um, as another resource to the families of our community. So I wanted to highlight that. Um, July 5th, um, there was a community cleanup that, um, the mayor and I also participated in at the city park. I wanted to thank, uh, Rob Royce and Deputy Chief Gibson for organizing that event and getting the word out on the project and the future projects that will continue throughout the rest of this year and onward into the future for cleanup day in our community. Um, wanted to thank the organizers of the Pride Festival. And lastly, the one that's probably going to take a little bit of time, I wanted to double back with, um, something from last year of May of 2020. I know, um, a lot of times we, we discuss things, we change, we vote on things, but we never really follow up on kind of how things have turned out. So back in May of 2020, as maybe a lot of people on council or on the previous council, um, we were talking about closing our fitness center. Um, due to a rather large financial loss that the center was incurring, we were thinking of closing it. And after an outpouring of support from the community that all of us, um, experienced via email and or phone calls, many of us on council, um, we voted and changed our minds to, um, keep the center open to see what happens. Well, tonight I just wanted to double back as Ms. Gruber provided me with some update that I asked her for, um, on how things were going. So, um, based on May 2020 expenditures and deficits and revenues, um, back in May of 2020, the deficit of the fitness center was $149,823. This past May of 2021, the deficit, deficit was $19,172. That was a substantial change. And I just wanted to highlight that, not only for those of us here sitting on council, but also for the public. Um, it was an amazing change, given the fact that we even dealt with COVID, um, which affected not only gyms but fitness centers across the world. So that restructuring, um, that Ms. Gruber and her team did was amazing and I wanted to compliment her. And, um, again, Abby, you're in the spotlight, um, just say what a great job you and, and all of your team did, um, in changing that bottom line cost. Um, and not only that, um, I think not only I, but the community and the council want to thank you for that because what I seriously received out of all those letters, um, was that the fitness center is a family. And I go to the fitness center now, not that I'm happy at 5:45 to wake up to go to the fitness center. But, um, I wanted to, to definitely say that and thank the community for educating me on the fitness center also because it is a family atmosphere. And sometimes it's not only the bottom line that we see, but it's, it's what we provide to our community. And, um, to that I say thank you. That's my.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. DeHaas.
Ms. Gilbert, I really appreciated that report. Thank you. Um, I think the fitness center is extremely important to the community and I'm really happy that you provided that report. Did we, did we mention the, uh, the opening, the ribbon cutting for the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project?
No, we didn't.
When, what, what was the date on that?
That was, we already did that, already did that the last.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Took care of that.
Okay, well, that's an important.
Yep.
Infrastructure improvement in the community. Um, and, uh, I wanted to reiterate that, um, I really appreciated the Maryland Municipal League Education Conference. Um, in addition to the, uh, the class on strategic planning, I, I appreciated the, uh, the presentation on building inclusive communities. And, uh, I got an enormous amount of value out of the education conference and I'm really happy that I attended. And most of the council members, uh, were able to attend and we were all really busy, um, attending many of the sessions. And then I was also really pleased with the, the Westminster Pride Festival. I was happy to see that so many folks attended. It was packed. There were a lot of people there. And, um, I was happy to see, uh, the council members that were there and the Westminster Police Department and Sheriff's Office did a really good job. Um, and the, uh, the street department, uh, wanted to appreciate, wanted to say my special appreciation for all their hard work and making the event a success. And we're looking forward to many more events now that we've reopened the community. And I think that'll be it, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, um, Mr. DeHaas. Um, I don't really have much to add. I just wanted to mention that, um, because we've mentioned the Pride Festival a few times and, uh, you know, we thank the city staff and, you know, for doing a great job in supporting the event. And, you know, I, you know, I was able to attend and I certainly saw that myself, but, uh, I think I would have also mentioned that, uh, you know, it's not a city event. It's, it's privately organized and, um, it's organized by Sherri Hostel-Joseph, owner of Bernie's Cafe, who does a fabulous job in putting it together. And, um, and of course, it's held at that at the Main Street because as Sherri once said, you know, if we're going to do a festival, if she's going to organize a festival, it's going to be up in front of her place.
Which is fair.
Instead of downtown where everything else is, which is totally fair. And, uh, I appreciate that. But anyway, uh, Sherri, uh, does a great job with that and, uh, you know, we're very proud that Westminster can host an event like that, the way it does. So moving on, uh, the next item is ordinances and resolutions. Uh, the first item is adoption of ordinance number 936 in Ordinance Amendment Chapter 7. Orders and commissions to add Article 4 Westminster Fiber Commission to create an advisory body generally charged with matters relating to the Westminster fiber network. Um, and, um, turn to Mayor Becker for that.
Yeah, sure. So, um, at our last meeting a month ago, um, this, the ordinance was introduced. Uh, sorry, let me navigate my computer screen here a second. Um, the ordinance was, um, ordinance number, uh, 936 was introduced. Um, and we discussed the ordinance a little bit, just as a reminder, uh, for the council, since it's been a while since we've met, um, what I would like to do this evening is, um, have any discussion about this ordinance, uh, if there is any, uh, move towards an adoption and then appoint a commission for this. The, um, the ordinance has, um, three goals. The first goal, just as a reminder, the short-term goal is to, uh, work with the county, uh, while initially first within the city, um, and to move that fiber network, um, outside the city limits, uh, into the area where the water and sewer system is that the city has. Um, a little bit of a longer term goal then is to, uh, work on a fiber network across the county. Um, and then eventually, uh, a much longer term goal, move to a regional, a possibility of a regional fiber network. Um, as such, um, the individuals' names that I've mentioned to the council over the last couple of weeks for serving on the commission, they are not all, of course, located in Westminster, um, and instead represent areas across the, the county that, who will be helpful in, uh, getting this accomplished. So I, um, enter this, uh, and, or sort of submit this in front of the council for your adoption this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Becker. Uh, Mr. Cavaci, you're the co-sponsor. Did you want to add anything?
Well, I, I think the, the comment I'd like to make is, you know, we sit up here and we make a lot of decisions, things that we try our best to understand and be knowledgeable about, but the reality is we have a lot of reliable staff, often to get input to make some of those decisions. But in this particular case, even on staff, we don't necessarily possess all the expertise that we think we need to get the level of guidance and then continued interaction, um, with some other entities. So we're going out and bringing in members in the community, members of the community that have a particular expertise or a particular understanding or knowledge that we think will help us accomplish the goal of growing the network outside of the city. And there's really good reasons to do that. Obviously, the pandemic really made it crystal clear that everyone needs access to high-speed, robust internet connectivity. And, you know, I, I think that while, yes, they are outside of the city, the people that live immediately adjacent within our water sewer service system, we still have some responsibility to those folks because they are on our water sewer system. They are people who come into town and, and spend money here and, and, and even though they may not live within city limits, they live in Westminster. And Westminster is more than just the 20,000 people that live within the boundaries. It's really the 38 or so thousand people that are on that water and sewer system. And while we don't represent them, they don't vote for us, they don't pay taxes, we're all still one community. And I think us expanding this network outside of the city limits is beneficial for all parties involved. And we need this commission and this expertise to help us do that. I, I think it's going to benefit. um everyone involved. And in particular, it's going to benefit us because it's going to bring a a a knowledge base and understanding and then the ability to go out and help us do things um that we may not necessarily be quite um as capable of doing uh independently. So I'm really excited about it. You know, at the end of the day, the the commission i- is going to help us with those things, but ultimately, you know, it's still our responsibility to make final decisions. The buck still stops with us. Um, I know that the members that are on this understand that. Um, but we also need, I I'm hoping we've vested them with enough ability um to go out there and go after it, get it done, um and get this train moving down the tracks um so that we can get this network um further expanded. Mayor Dominic played an important role getting the first few residents connected outside. I think, are they connected yet? Are they, they're up and running? The the, it's like fourteen seventeen homes, something like that. Yeah, so we've already, we've already done, we're already outside of the city. So we we've pierced that veil. But now it's time to get that locomotive rolling down the track. And that's, I think, what we're trying to do here. So that's why I'm sponsoring it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Any other comments?
Mr. President, the only thing I will add is, you know, I think this is very timely, also considering the fact that, you know, um just bluntly, there's a lot of money floating out there related to this issue right now and probably will continue to be. And um I think having a a commission out there that is really focused on this issue um is very timely and very important. And I would also, you know, emphasize the fact that um, you know, one of the things that the pandemic exposed is how important fiber is to us, not only personally in our own homes, but also from an economic development engine. Um, and the reality is, um you know, while the pandemic is eventually going to be in the rearview mirror, we all hope, um, the the changes that have taken place in our society uh from an economic development standpoint, more people working from home, that stuff i- is here to stay. Um, so I think it's extremely timely, and I'm glad that we're taking this step uh to look at this.
I thank you, Mr. Hoff. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President.
Mr. DeHaas.
Ms. Gilbert, you want to go ahead?
No, you can go ahead.
Um, I wanted to reiterate the economic development aspect of it, um, the job creations aspect of it. Um, and I'm really excited about it. Um, I hear uh not a week goes by, which I don't hear from folks who are looking forward to us bringing the fiber network outside of town. So I really appreciate uh Mr. Cavaci's uh work and and Dr. Whack and 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 the folks that have worked on this in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, thank you, yes. Uh, I just wanted to say a few things. I wanted to to uh thank the mayor for grabbing um this as one of her first initiatives. Um, and I also wanted to thank Dr. Whack for all so many years ago. Um, I I'm, it was not without controversy, I'm sure, at the time. But I, and I, he's probably sitting here right now thinking, I never would have foresaw a pandemic and being out of the pandemic and what we now see is is pretty much fiber being a necessity like electricity is. So um I think all of that set us at a very great point right now um to look at the future and and the initiatives and and to grab hold of those um ideas much as um um Councilman Huff has has eloquently said and Councilman Cavaci, so I'm not going to repeat any of those things because they were both right on tar- on target. Um, but I'm looking forward to expanding the the infrastructure that we have because it will be of benefit to us in the city um and to everyone, hopefully, one day in Carroll County.
All right, thank you. Um, so just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, I noticed, and I'm sorry I didn't uh note this earlier, um, but I do notice that in two places in the draft, we refer to the city manager as opposed to the city administrator. And so without objection, you know, I'd like to ask the staff to correct those references to be city administrator. Um, you're getting no objection. I just ordered. Ms. Levand, you can take care of that. Thank you very much. Uh, and then along those lines, I just wanted to note, because we've talked about it, you know, just within the last few minutes, that we do have a new city administrator starting, you know, in uh in, you know, just a little over a month and very excited to have her. And one of the things I know that in my conversations with her, she's excited about is um, you know, the fiber network and the value it brings to the city and the opportunities um to expand it. And one of the things I just want to note is that you know, in the language in here, um, yeah, I think it's critical that, you know, while some of the languages is a little empowering for the commission, I think it is absolutely critical that that their work be done in lockstep with the city staff. I think that it's critical not to get out in front of them, and I'm very much hoping that the new city administration will be a partner in what we're doing here, because I think that that's that's vital of success of of this going forward over the long term. So I'm hopeful that's going to be part of the days that, you know, as we go forward. And that's all I wanted to mention. Um, anyone else wish to be heard?
We've adopted this.
Well, so this is, this is on, we've done a forgot, yeah. So actually, we should have taken a mo- we should have had.
Yeah, I thought of that. You you want that motion?
To that end, I'll make a motion for the adoption.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Hoff has made a motion.
Oh, and.
Second from Ms. Gilbert. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, are we, are we also, we're not appointing the members at this point.
No, we're just adopting.
Yep, got it.
And this is to adopt the ordinance. Or at, before which we count on the appointed commission.
Right, just wanted to make sure it was clear that we're not doing that.
Right. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted.
Mr. Council President.
Uh, Ms. Levand.
Is that to adopt the ordinance as amended?
Yes.
That was my intent, yes. Sorry.
And a email improvised for humans to be declared.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is adoption of emergency ordinance number nine thirty seven. An ordinance amending the code of the city of Westminster, chapter one seventy three, environmental sustainability, article one, plastic bags, section one seventy three dash two definitions to clarify, I think that means seriously clarify, to clarify the definition of prohibited single use bags. Ms. Levand?
Yeah, so as your mayor called you, adopted an ordinance last year, um, I think it was last year, a number of months ago to um restrict the use of disposable plastic bags in order to protect the uh environment and music. And you, in doing that, were a little bit cutting edge. There are only a few handful of jurisdictions in the state that have done that. Um, and so um we were uh finding our way a little bit. We modeled our ordinance um on on the existing ordinances elsewhere, although we did make some changes to it in terms of exactly who would be covered by it in order not to unduly um burden your business community. Um, however, in doing that, um, as businesses began to attempt to comply, as the compliant state began to approach, it became clear that many business owners um were unclear about whether their bags were compliant or not. And so we have provided um an amendment to the ord- to the definition of single use plastic carryout bag, the bags that are prohibited by the ordinance. And to add a specific concrete standard for measuring them. And then the uh, the standard we have proposed is a three mil thickness um which will um make sure that um people aren't pushing the boundaries in terms of the types of plastic bags that they might use because um many plastic bags at um two point two five mils are marketed as reusable, but they don't actually get reused as a matter of actual practice. And so we suggested three mils, we did some research. Um, we have found that um some jurisdictions go as high as four, but that's relatively unusual, and I don't think it is necessary to accomplish your purposes. And we'll say, make one other comment about the standard that we put in here, which is that um your typical reusable bag that's made out of that plastic fabric is not measured in mils at all, as I understand it from my Google research. Um, that is, the fabric generally is measured in grams per square meter, T S M. And so apparently, plastic fabric is equally measured in that um, in that manner. And those um those carryalls that you see made out of the plastic fabric are generally at least eighty T S M. Um, and so you you may want to consider at some point in the future, perhaps, um including a standard referencing the um thickness of those um woven plastic.
They're actually nonwoolen.
Pardon me?
They're actually called nonwoolen bags. I happen to be in that industry. That's, that's considered a nonwoolen bag, excuse me, Mr. President.
We appreciate.
Nonwo- it's nonwoolen.
Expert knowledge, yes.
Much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Cavaci.
You should have just called Mr. Cavaci instead of Google.
So that is the ordinance that you have in front of you, that is just that one change.
Thank you, Ms. Levand, and thank you for for this work. I think, you know, it's it's valuable to be able to give uh people more guidance on, you know, you know, I I know that, you know, some people are asking because, you know, they want to be compliant, do the right thing. Other people are asking because they want to get around the ban, and I'm not happy about that. And so, you know, I think that, you know, we're already seeing some of that, and so I'm glad that we are moving forward. Yeah, I would have been, you know, I I think, you know, three mils is uh is a reasonable standard. I would have been happy to go up to four, but I think three is certainly defensible and reasonable. And uh we can go ahead and uh, you know, you know, move forward with that if uh that's the council's pleasure. Let's um, let's get a motion um to uh adopt this uh ordinance. May I have a motion to adopt this as um, let's be positive.
So move, Mr. President. Do we, do we need, do we need a motion for the purposes of suspending the rules?
So, um, you need a, I I want to draw your attention that it is drafted as an emergency.
Emergency, right.
And you can, however, my position has been, and you can certainly do a motion to set aside the rules, that the rules actually contemplate an emergency ordinance. So you're not actually setting them aside, you're just invoking.
I guess we'll always have that discussion.
You're invoking.
I'll defer to the, I'll defer to the, to, to, to the city council.
Right, well, I was.
And I'll, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and.
Thank you. I was just about to note that, you know, it is emergency legislation.
Okay, yes, sir.
It will be effective upon adoption, just to get everybody to understand.
Okay.
Um, so we need, so Mr. Dow state a motion to adopt?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. Second from Mr. Cavaci. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. DeHaas.
I'm seeing a lot of compliance in the community. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback. I I think, I I think we're doing the right thing. I think what we're doing is a good thing. And uh, we're probably going to have to tweak it and amend it more in the future because we are on, we're not on, we're on the bleeding edge with this. We're we're leading the state, we're leading the mid-Atlantic region in this. So we probably will have to make some adjustments in the future. We're flexible.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeHaas.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoff.
Um, I've heard a variety of feat, you know, a lot of feedback to uh some positive, some negative, and that's fine. Um, you know, to be expected. Not everybody's going to be happy with everything you do. Uh, but I just want to make an overarching point. Um, I'm glad that we're addressing this because there's some confusion. So I think it's important to clarify uh what it is. And I, this is something that, you know, I've been talking about on the planning and zoning front. Um, you know, ordinances and and codes are supposed to be living documents. So when we find something that we need to clarify, um, this is what I like to see, is that we modify it to provide clarity or to correct an issue that may be brought in front of us. Um, because I'm a big proponent, you know, as we're going through planning and zoning related issues, if there's things in the code we need to update, we should update them. Um, so I I just think this is a prime example of the fact that it's important that that we make changes as we see issues develop. Um, so I'm very much behind that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Um, is there any further discussion? Um, Mayor, did you care to say anything about this?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to say real quick um about the plastic bag ordinance, and you all know, of course, I'm I'm in favor of this as well. Um, one of the uh things that I just found interesting about it um is that I received a phone call a week or two ago from the Sierra Club of Central Maryland, who had actually been in Westminster prior to the ban of the plastic bags and were um doing um surveys, not surveys, uh but um counting shoppers uh leaving stores in Westminster. Um, and they are going to do so again at some point after the bag ban has been in in effect for quite some time. But one of the things that they found out, I'm not, won't go into all the details, um, but um only about eighty seven percent of the shoppers uh were you, sorry, eighty percent of the shoppers were using single use plastic bags um when they were coming out of the stores in Westminster. Um, I was a little surprised. I thought it would be a little bit lower. Um, but uh, single use plastic bags, uh they counted eighty, about eighty seven percent of shoppers were using them. And so um, it'll be really interesting in a couple of months. I don't know when they're going to sit outside a store and count people in the future, but it'll be interesting at some point in time when they uh get back in touch with me and um let me know what the percent is afterwards. So I just wanted to share that little bit of information.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, um, hearing no further discussion, move on to a vote. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And emergency ordinance number nine thirty seven is adopted. Um, Mr. Deutsch, um, can we count on you to uh inform the um business community that uh what the new standard is?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, um, there is no unfinished business of which I am aware. Unless anybody else is aware of any. Move on to new business, and that, um, under new business, we have approval of change order number five to the H R I Incorporated Contract for Wastewater Treatment Plant, E N R and Biosolids Upgrade Project. Mr. Glass?
Yes, sir. I'm sure you recall, excuse me, in early twenty nineteen, the Mayor Council award a construction contract to H R I to build the E N R Biosolids um project. Um, in addition, the city contracted with G H D for the design, engineering and um um engineering services during construction and also construction management and inspection for the project. So to date, the Mayor Council have authorized four change orders to the city's contract with H R I. And they total one point three million, well, one million, three hundred thousand eight, twelve dollars and thirty five cents to be exact. Um, and each of those change orders, one through four, qualified for the state cost share eligibility as well. This is change order number five, and it acts to balance some additions and credits to the project's date. And although there's a quite a few items here, I'll go over them. Um, is um quickly, and I can circle back for detail as as that's warranted. But um, they're all, at this point, they are P C Os, which is a proposed change order. So there's a a number of those that are all rather small. What we try to do is is want those together instead of coming to you for every thousand dollar um change to the project. Well, at uh at the same time. So um the first item is work related to additional roof drains at the refrigeration facility for three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, work related to a wet tap size change, that's P C O eighteen for three thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Work related to replacement and welding of some stainless steel air piping for three thousand two hundred and seventy two dollars. Work related to additional roof drains at the solids handling facility for eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Work related to installation of precast roof addition. This is a concrete of roof racks for the septic facility for twelve thousand. Should make note of that, that any work done for the septic facility is one hundred percent county funded, so none of that comes out of the the city's pocket. There's a credit for the temporary power. Um, as the contractors required to to pay us back for any power that they consume and the power during their construction work, thirty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars and twenty three cents uh for a material change of uh fire retardant thin fill top coat for the solid handling building and support structure. Uh, P C O thirty for forty nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. It includes work for related to fabrication installation of future filter number six box cover for two thousand five hundred and forty two dollars. Work related to fabrication and installation of an overflow weir for three thousand five hundred and forty nine dollars. The uh credit for overtime inspection of fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, work related to material costs. Work related to material cost differences between stop gates and stop plates for two thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Credit for a redundant air monitor for one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And work related to installation of translucent panel frames, that's P C O thirty-eight, for three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Work related to the relocation of the Allen Facility piping for the P C O thirty-nine for four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And a grout replenishment budget for reactor number five. A little bit in more detail right now, that's for three hundred and one thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars. If you remember back in the very first change order number one, it was a rather large one. It was in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars, and it was related to the denitrification facility because during the construction, it was discovered that there was a sinkhole and infirm surfaces below that the substructure of that facility. So not only did that change order take the grout budget associated and estimated for that structure, it also took the grout budget for reactor number five, which has not been built yet. Even though it assumed both of those grout budgets, it was, the grout that we use still expired exceeded the grout replacement budgets for 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 both facilities. What this P C O number forty-two for three hundred and one thousand dollars does is to replenish the grout budget for reactor number five, which should be in the next probably four months or so when that goes into construction. The reason we need to have that replenished as we speak is I won't have the opportunity to come back to you to ask for additional grout if, for certain, we're going to have to have some grout. I don't know how much that's going to be. This is the estimated number. So I have to have something to work on in the two times. That's why we're asking for this three hundred and one, three hundred and ninety-two. The other thing, last thing that this change order number five includes is a non-compensatory time extension of seventeen days. And that was approved, again, back to the original change order number one at the denitrification facility because of that sinkhole work that I just described. There's seventeen days that were added to the contract because of that. So taking the contract deducts into account the net cost of the change order, which is three hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars, seven, seven cents, with the exceptions of the credits listed. This change order number five is also subject to the state cost share eligibility of fifty-three point six five percent. I think it's worth noting that at this point, we are two percent, two percent, two point six percent of the total for of change orders. And if we could exclude that original nine hundred thousand dollar change order for the sinkhole under the denitrification facility, we would be at one point six percent change order at this point, and I'm, you don't know how, well, I'm sure you're happy for that, too. I'm static for that. This is a rehab facility as well, and and those, those kind of percent increase for change order are unheard of. So at this point, the recommendation, once I get done patting myself on the back there, that the staff recommend that the council authorize the mayor to execute a change order number five total now of three hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars, seventy-seven cents to contract with H R I. Please to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. Let's, let's get a motion on the floor so we can discuss this appropriately.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion from Mr. Hoff for approval on the change order, and a second from Ms. Gilbert. Questions from Mr. Glass? Any discussion?
Mr. President, I have a question or two.
Mr. Hoff.
Just to educate myself in the new value, I'm assuming this money for the change order comes out of our capital budget reserves in some manner. Is that correct? Or how does?
So it comes from the sewer budget, but at the same time, the, it'll be submitted to the state for their cost share as well.
So we will get reimbursed for that fifty-three point six six five percent. We will get that back.
That's great.
Wonderful. So it comes out of the sewer.
That's correct.
Capital budget. Okay. Just trying to get a understanding. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Raj. Ms. Gilbert, did you have a?
I I did. I don't really have a question. I just have a comment. I I just want to comment. I know this project isn't finished yet, but I'm quite impressed that we're only on change order number five compared to other projects we recently have gotten into. We've been up into the twenties and pluses, so I think that's quite impressive. So I know you're happy about it, as we are, that we don't have to think about huge amounts of money in addition to these change orders. So I just want to congratulate you and everyone else who is a part in all that.
So if I may mention this as well, it's not me. This is a team of people that make this work, so as much as I'd like to feel one hundred percent of the thunder, it's not, this is not just me.
Well, thank them.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Deutsch?
President Carrero, at one of our earlier meetings, there was counsel interest in learning more detail and regarding the scope of the E N R project. And Mr. Glass and I had talked about scheduling that meeting in August, expecting that your new administrator would be on board, and we're now looking at your second meeting in September for that session. So plan on a briefing on the status and scope of the project about two months from now.
Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Thank you for not dropping that ball, and because I know that we are all interested in in a thorough update on that. And, you know, I know a few of us have had a chance to go and visit, you know, recently. I I need to make some time for that, too, because it's been quite a while since I've come down there. Drive past frequently, have seen the upwards progress, but would love to get a better sense of how it's going there. So, Mr. Glass, I'll give you a call and see if we can do that sometime soon. Like, any further discussions, comments, questions? There are none. Move on to a vote on approval of change order number five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the change order is approved. Thank you all very much. There's an item of new business that does not appear somehow on the on the agenda, and I think we had intended it to. And so I'm not sure, perhaps we, perhaps we neglected to, you know, let the city clerk know this, which is entirely possible. But I understood that the mayor had intended to appoint the members of the fiber commission immediately upon adoption of the ordinance. Is that the case? Mayor Becker?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, Councilman Pecker, if that's okay. And these, the names, I know that I sent to the council over the last two or three weeks to make sure that there were no issues with the members that I was planning to appoint to the Westminster Fiber Network Commission. So, um, so let me go through in no particular order right now on serving on the Westminster Fiber Commission. Councilmember Dan Hoff will be our council representative on the fiber commission. I will be asking Dr. Robert Whack to be on the fiber commission. Sonia Hand, who is a senior executive at a technology company that is local, lives in Tony Town. Sonia, Ms. Hand, is also very active on the tech council. Jennifer Bubzik, senior executive Hill Development Group, Woodhaven Construction, and again, is very involved and passionate about broadband access. Zach Tomlin, we know Mr. Tomlin from Tomlin Technologies, active in a nonprofit community, supporter of Westminster Fiber Network. And again, some of these are residents outside of Westminster because, remember, the short-term goal is to move the fiber outside of the city limits initially. Mr. Ted Pibble, Director of Strategic Alliances and Partnership, former C I O Harford County, again, proponent of broadband and connected with state issues and broadband. And then finally, Mr. Nick Wagman, lives in Westminster and serves as a White House as the Assistant Director of Design Construction for National Parks and is a principal engineer for Wagman Engineering, a civil engineering firm. And so those will be my appointments, please, for the Westminster Fiber Network.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Becker. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the mayor's?
Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Kavachi to approve the mayor's appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. Is there any discussion? There are none. Move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the mayor's appointments, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the mayor's appointments are approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is departmental reports. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report to me.
Thank you. I have no report.
One of our own. Mr. Davis?
Our report is about seventy-five percent complete the wastewater room from their old building to their temporary location. We had to stand up a new network at their temporary location and maintain the old network, the old. So once we get everybody out, then we got to tear down and back feed the old side. So we're in that process. We're working on a single sign-on application for our users, so bring a single sign-on to lobby, ask for everything but one pane glass to get all their apps. That'll begin in sometime here in mid-July. And then we also start the immunis conversion, which will take probably about a year to two-year conversion time. We'll have to run both systems side by side for a while, and it'll take a lot of staff time with I T and finance and H R also. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McColl?
No report, please, any. Thank you.
Mr. Devo?
Okay. Good evening. So tomorrow, Tuesday, July thirteenth, at approximately eleven forty-five A M, in cooperation with Towson University and due to a grant from American View, a drone will be flown over downtown Main Street to record surface elevation, surface temperature, and surface vegetation cover. The estimated time for the drone flight is approximately fifteen minutes, and these results will be shared with the Tree Commission meeting scheduled for September eighth, twenty twenty-one. Soft cap happened rather quickly, so it is up on the face, up on Facebook. And again, about fifteen minutes in, this is really exciting, and we discussed this with Towson last week, and they are able to come out tomorrow.
So everybody out on the streets at eleven forty-five?
Yes. If anybody's wondering what their drone is for, that's what it is.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Wasn't this the topic of Andrew Gray's master thesis?
Yes, it was.
Fascinating. It is a fascinating read.
It is, and he has ties still with Towson University, and that is the big reason that we are able to have this done.
Well, we look forward to the results. That'll be great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I might add to that, that the police department has been consulted with the, so they are certainly aware of this activity tomorrow so that they don't get a bunch of extraneous calls, wondering what's going on on Main Street.
We will.
They'll get it anyway, and it won't activate our anti-aircraft weaponry or.
We're not talking about it.
Oh, we're not talking about that?
According to the F A A, too, that was one of the requirements that they had to make them to get approval, so.
Well, we do have an airport.
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense, actually.
Yes, it does.
On Thursday, July fifteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a year site development plan, S nineteen-two runway self-storage. The proposed development is located near the corner of Buckshot Road and Meadow Branch Road and includes six one-story self-storage, self-service storage facility buildings for approximately four hundred and twenty-five individual storage units. They will also provide more zoning appeals recommendations for a telecommunication facility located at eight ninety-five Line Road, a telecommunication facility located at one twenty-one Independence Way, and a building materials sales and storage yard and contractor's equipment and storage yard located at forty-five Magna Way. On Monday, July nineteenth, the beneficial insect release will be held at the Westminster City Hall, where five thousand ladybird beetles, better known as ladybugs, will be released, and the public is invited to this event. And again, that is also on Facebook. And just a quick update, the Centennial Monument has been repaired, cleaned, and relocated to Belgrade Square. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Major?
Yes, sir. So over the course of the past two weeks, we did have two significant special events. We spoke about the Pride event and also the July Fourth event, and I want to thank Mr. Glass and your shop for helping us. Like Mr. Kavachi said, it's very resource-intensive, so we really appreciate you all. Thanks. As far as our community events are concerned, we did have, as Ms. Gilbert mentioned, we had a community cleanup at City Park. Madame Mary actually joined us on that. It's a wonderful event. National Night Out, just a reminder, is August third. It's coming up. Six communities are already signed up and involved in that, so we're greatly looking forward to that. On August ninth is our shop of the cop event for back to school. That's going to be helping Dudders Park. That's going to be in partnership with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, ourselves, and Shepherd Staff. And also, we've seen a great increase in bike patrols and foot patrols, and that creates a lot of ad hoc opportunities for officers to interact with the community. We're getting a lot of positive feedback about that. And earlier today, I actually spoke to Mr. Depot, and then we're going to help coordinate a merchants meeting with downtown merchants with the police department, have like some type of get-together so we can talk about any issues or concerns they may have, so we can set that up in the future. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gruber?
Good evening. As Councilman Dayhoff indicated, we will be celebrating our official opening of Tohome Farm Park tomorrow evening at six P M. to welcome our newest play structure in the city of Westminster. And we're looking forward to seeing some of you out there to cut the ribbon. We'll also have a balloon artist, a face painter, free snow, snowballs for those members of the community who plan to attend and join us for that celebration. So look forward to seeing you all there at six o'clock to home a farm. Then on Wednesday night, we will actually be hosting an event at Wakefield Belly Park. We'll host our first night out with nature, where we're going to do a little dip netting in some of our ponds and study the health of the water in the ponds and the streams that are on the property. So we're looking forward to engaging our community in that particular site for that event on Wednesday night. These activities are all part of our month of July activity calendar. We celebrate Recreation and Parks Month and try to host an event every single day of the week during the month of July. So those are just a few of the exciting things that we have going on. And then I think the biggest news for this evening that I'm happy to share with the council is the city was successful in receiving the M H A A grant award. Total amounts of funding is two hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars coming from M H A A with a dollar-for-dollar match coming from the city. As you may remember, that was allocated for in the city's capital improvement budget for the school year twenty twenty-two. And this particular funding source will help us seal the building envelope for the Durbin House, whereby we can make the appropriate exterior structural adaptations to the Durbin House to secure any water intrusion issues that we're experiencing with that particular structure and basically mothball it for future purpose and use. So I'm certainly excited to be moving ahead with some restoration of that particular historic site within the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. We've had a series of water main breaks recently. However, utilities quickly made the repairs and was minimal disruption as as they always do. Without any disruption at all, so I'm pretty pleased, actually very pleased with. Our pure water Westminster pilot continues to operate without fail, although I probably shouldn't have said that. But we're collecting.
Short-circuiting right now.
But we're collecting data now, and it's happened for the last three weeks or so, and all, everything's running well there. So we have a number of new projects to go out to bid as well with the help of the Street Committee office, and we're looking forward to putting some bids on that. And, um, we're looking forward to, uh, opening some bids on that as well. So, uh, what's our questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Deha?
Did we get any feedback on the newsletter?
About?
Uh, we, we included information about pure water in that, didn't we? I didn't get any feedback.
I think we would have.
Good, good, okay.
Showed that with us, we had.
Okay.
Three of the four quarterly distributions of the newsletter that have already contained the information are out. The final one will go out in three weeks.
Okay.
So then the entire community will have received the information, uh, in the newsletter that contains the item you're talking about. Um, staff has received a couple of comments, uh, and they have been positive, but.
Good.
No additional detail.
I mean, I get positive feedback about the initiative, but I haven't gotten any, any feedback at all about the newsletter. And usually, we hear about things that are in the newsletter. So I guess this, I guess it's good. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch.
Oh, one, one, one final thing, Mr. President. This Thursday, uh, the city of Westminster and, and most every city in Maryland will be receiving the first allocation of the, uh, American Rescue Plan funds under the federal legislation that was signed into law in March of this year by the president. Uh, as council is aware, uh, Westminster is slated to receive about fifteen million dollars over the next two years, split evenly into an amount coming this week and an amount one year later. I would suggest, Mr. President, that you would schedule a finance committee meeting, perhaps, uh, within the next couple of weeks, if we could meet with the financial advisor retained to assist us in that effort so that we can begin to bring recommendations to council. Uh, it's not urgent, but, but time flies. We have a much longer time horizon here than you had under the CARES Act a year ago. Uh, but it would be good for council to begin to, to focus on how that money should be allocated. And, you know, perhaps having that meeting in a few weeks can get that ready for, for some further council discussions as well.
And thank you, Mr. Deutsch. And, uh, as, as you and I discussed earlier today, you know, um, when the mayor's, the mayor returns and I'll be gone the following week. And when I get back, and Mr. Hoff has already had his chance to leave town, and he can't go, he can't leave again. And so as soon as, uh, we're all back, then, uh, we'll look forward to scheduling that maybe in three weeks' time. And, uh, if we may, we should, uh, let the wider folks know that, uh, we'll be looking for some availability during that time.
Sure.
Anything else for the staff, Mr. Bush?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for coming up tonight. Appreciate it. It was always good to see you. Final item on our agenda is citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. In addition to in-person comments, we welcome comments to be sent to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. People commenting to our, through our city clerk that way should include their address and phone number with their, uh, email, uh, at that time. And, uh, at this time, um, you know, uh, we'll welcome any comments from the public, from anybody who is here. Maybe they like to hear today. Mr. Hoff? I'll be very brief. Could you please give your? Yes. Nine forty-seven West Cliff Court. I just wanted to share that, uh, I serve as board member and officer with the Fendi Farm Homeowners Association, and we've been following very closely and eagerly, uh, the information that's been going around and around relevant to the plan that was shared tonight. And, uh, we as a community really, uh, recognize the gem that we're fortunate to live around. And we do appreciate and are in very much support of the vast majority of items that appear in that plan. We would just ask that as the nitty-gritty of those ten phases move forward and, uh, actual plans for the specifics go into place, that consideration continued to be given to the fact that nineteen of our homeowners do share property boundary with the Wakefield property, and we will continue to be very engaged and eager in being involved with, uh, those discussions. Uh, the paving of the lot and other things that are already there for our regular use. I go four, five, six times a week and enjoy the trails. And so we very much do appreciate, uh, those proactive things that have already been taking place to make it inviting, uh, and comfortable for our community members to, to use. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. That concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be held on Monday, July twenty-sixth. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Please stay safe and healthy. Wear your mask and get your shot.